Next on the agenda number two, 2016-111, update. Order for a study of water and sewer infrastructure by Quincy City Council Public Works Committee. And Commissioner Rowan is here to speak.
Great, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, when I introduced this back now, almost a year ago, that part of it had grown. In fact, if he's watching TV, I apologize because I probably forgot to invite him here, but it really brought up a conversation with constituent Peter Forbes, who was talking to me about the role asset management plays in particularly developing budgets and projecting out costs over time and looking at what return on investment might be in relation to, again, addressing what obviously is aging infrastructure. And so, when I submitted this particular order to basically investigate, conduct hearings or whatever in relation to it, as I began to speak with the Commissioner and with other people within the city, again, including Mr. Shays here this evening, one of the things that I discovered as related to both water and sewer and drain was that I was kind of re-compressed with what I found as I began to look closer at this in terms of a kind of integrated approach that they were taking in terms of, again, approaching these very issues in terms of why does the status of our assets within water and sewer and drain? And again, how is the best way of addressing this? Now, clearly, we live in an age of time scarcity, quite honestly, that we have, as has been mentioned here before, is the Clean Water Act, which has now placed tremendous requirements on us that we're supposed to meet at a time, at the same time, where there are actually declining funding in relation to this. And so, the idea of being on top of this is more important than ever. And actually, that's happening both sewer and drain and in the Water Department. And again, we don't want to be here all night in relation to these things. So, again, I think we will have the department back at some other point in time to focus on the water. But this evening, just looking in terms of the sewer and drain system, they've kind of broken out of a siloed approach in terms of how to manage these specific assets and are looking at these in such a way that basically fixes one problem, more or less, or is looking at one problem, that how do we get the maximum return out of that specifically by conducting things in an integrated fashion? And so, with that, again, including Madam President, I'm happy with the Commissioners here, and I know Miss Hall has some things to say regarding this as well. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Madam President, I was with Council. Thank you.
This is Commissioner.
The invitation to be here this evening. My role will be brief. I won't be making any subsequent presentation this hour. We'll be doing that. It does provide an opportunity to talk to you a bit about this outstanding public servant who is Quincy born and raised, orphan house man, somehow went to North Quincy High School, and in turn. As you know, with continuing challenges from regulatory authorities, as Councilwoman Finn mentioned, our first presenter, Dear Verhoeven, with the support of Mayor Coke in this council, transitioned from the Solicitor's Office to the Department of Public Works Compliance Management. With the absence of the City Engineer and my direction, she has been assigned conditional responsibilities, including management of certain sewer and drain operations. As impressive as the quantity, variety, and quality of her work is and has been, what is most exceptional is the ease and enthusiasm with she accepts these expanded responsibilities. She understands that every aspect of public service is vital, and because of this, she undertakes every administrative and operational assignment with professionalism and energy. Today, she is as comfortable and proficient in dung dries and workflows, flipping manhole, looking at a section of pipe irregularities and sampling outfalls as she was in a suit, representing the city at a civil service hearing. On top of her daily workload and on her own initiative since July, when she has assumed this responsibility, she has, this is the past nine months, been certified as a professional municipal stormwater manager. For a nation of 199 people, only 193 people in the whole country have that certification. Only two in Massachusetts, and we have one right here from this chamber. Obtained pipe assessment certification, manhole assessment certification, lateral assessment certification, National Association of Sanitary Sewer Companies certification. She has obtained a graduate certificate in environmental policy in December 2016. Completed two classes in graduate GIS certificate programs. Presented on SSCS IDDE integration at the New England Water and Environmental Association meeting in January 2017. Submitted an article for publication in the New Year's Collection Journal on that same topic. Became a member of the state stormwater collaborative and chair of the advocacy subcommittee. Become a member of the Ponce River Stormwater Collaborative, which consists of municipalities within the Ponce River watershed. Been invited to speak present at the spring meeting of the New England Chapter of American Public Works Association on catch basin cleaning and MS4 compliance. She's been instrumental in obtaining a $60,000 CZM residency grant, a $40,000 DEP infrastructure grant, and a $55,000 CPC Butler Pond grant. And on top of that, this month, she's scheduled training on erosion and sediment control. She has earned the respect of her peers. Clearly, she is most qualified to provide you with the information that you will see tonight. We look forward to her presentation. We look forward to another meeting, Chairman Finn and members of the council, to bring in a water expert as well, Paul Delby, who's here, just to see how the council will function this evening and what any other information you may have. We are in the process of finalizing a model, a hydraulic model, a TIS system. And I think that document alone, once we share it with the Mayor's Office for the final appropriation, will answer perhaps most of the questions that you folks may have with respect to the website. It's a pleasure to bring to you again, my dear.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes.
That's quite an introduction, dear, so don't disappoint us.
So, good evening again, and I'm going to present this evening on our sewer and drain infrastructure updates. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the great instructions we've been repairing, assessing, and then as well as some of the operational practices that the department's been doing in order to be effective and efficient with great care dollars to try to solve two problems with one procedure, I guess. So, there's a couple of handouts that I have, just because the slides really, the images didn't come out very well in the slides because they're big images. Oh, they're not clear, so I'd like to get those out before I start. So, the update's going to consist of a little talk about sanitary sewer infrastructure. We're going to start with the big picture, the big nationally, just briefly, and then we're going to talk Quincy specific. So, I'm looking at stormwater infrastructure nationally and then Quincy specific. I'll touch upon the GIS mapping updates that we've done throughout as we go. And I'm going to talk about some of the outreach that we're doing in the community about our clean water programs. We really feel and are in the department that it's important for our residents to know what we're doing with their money and what they're buying with their dollars. So, to start, the American Society for Civil Engineers gives America's wastewater and stormwater infrastructure nationwide a deep $298 billion, what is estimated to be invested over the next 20 years to keep the industry going for wastewater and stormwater systems. That number is mostly attributed to sewer pipes. The Clean Water Act usually did a lot with financial investment in our sanitary sewage treatment plants. So, a lot of those have been upgraded, but tied into the neglect of our conveyance system. So, the majority of that money is distributed to our conveyance system. We have 800,000 miles of public sewer pipe in the U.S., and just the construction without the engineering is about $100 to $200 per linear foot to rehab the sewer pipes. And Quincy is, you know, is no exception. So, the average age for sewers in the United States is 47 years, and the average age for sewers in Quincy is 92 years old. And 80% of our sewers are greater than 80 years old, and we have 176 miles of sewer pipe that is greater than 80 years old. These pipes are not meant to last forever. They do have a lifespan, and they're approaching the end of their age. This is a breakdown of Quincy's sanitary sewer system by age. I broke it into the decade that the pipe was placed in, into the ground. So, if we can, I need glasses. Okay, so, all the way to the right would be an unknown date, and then you have 18, the 18A, I think it says, and going to the left is the carbon investment. So, as you can see, in the past few decades, there's been very, very little investment in our underground infrastructure versus what it was, you know, back in the, or the turn of the, in mid 1900s. Yeah?
Big investment, yeah.
So, one of the exercises I did when preparing for this presentation was to actually figure out, not only is our infrastructure old, but our infrastructure is also very vulnerable because we have so much coastline. So, I created a 200-foot buffer around all of our coastline on GIS and calculated that we have 66,851 feet of sewer pipe located within 200 feet of the coast. That's 12.6 miles of pipe that's tight, just by location alone, is tightly, is exposed to tidal influence. And we have 484 sewer manholes also within that same buffer. So, when we're that close to the coast, we're subject to tidal infiltration and also the salt water can cause damage to our infrastructure, either way of the water and things like that in the manholes. So, in addition to our sewer infrastructure being old, we also have other old infrastructure. So, I want to talk a little about stormwater. We have 52 tide gates. Some of them are double tide gates, that's why that number doesn't add 52, but 40 are in very good to fair condition and seven are in very poor, poor condition. The estimated cost to repair these is about $218,000 if we were to repair them all now. Again, we're vulnerable. These are our outfalls. I'm sure anyone who has coastline there in their district will understand that outfalls are essential to getting floodwater off our people's streets. 18 outfalls right now are in poor to very poor condition. This is Sexton Circle. 115 outfalls are in fair condition, in very good condition. We have 308, some we can't even find, they're buried, they're broken, you can't find them. But of the ones that we can locate, we have 18 that are in poor to very poor condition. Some of the outfalls are very large, and the cost to rehab them, I think the one on Chickatapa was over a million, I think. But some are less, some are eight inch pipe, a little bit less. So, right now, we're going through an assessment of which outfalls we think really need to hit first to rehab. We'll talk a little bit about our drain infrastructure, 9,329 catch basins, 305 drain manholes, and 150 miles of drain pipe. And in fiscal, oh, I should say 17, sorry. In fiscal year 17, we cleaned 3,120 catch basins, 1,180 tons of debris, identified 272 catch basins in need of repair and repaired 75, that's the maximum our budget allowed us to do, and disposed of 7,011 tons of debris for street sweeping. Just these budget items are relatively new. With, you know, the help of the mayor and the help of this council, we've been able to fund this additional work. It's essential to our communities, specifically catch basins and street sweeping because it helps, again, get the floodwaters off our streets and the drainage more efficient. Okay, so now, we're going to get into MS4. So, what are some of the things we're required to do for stormwater? And I guess, in some ways, sewer compliance. These are the six minimum control measures associated with the NIMTS permit. We're going to focus on number three tonight. Number three deals with kind of where the sewer and the drain cross each other, where there's an overlap, where there's a regulatory overlap, and sometimes an package physical overlap. But we're going to talk about that specifically because that's something that our department has really been focused on, is being more innovative in how we can leverage one to solve another problem on the other side. So, we'll talk a little about that. Okay, so, MS4 investigations require us to map our entire stormwater system. So, right now, we have a good majority of our stormwater system mapped. It's a good time to pass out my maps. Again, I have, I like to bring technology, so I'll pass out the iPads and we can take a peek at them. I think I'm in the sewer layer, but you can click on an asset, a pipe or a manhole. Information on that will come up on the side. We have all of our plans scanned. If you click on, I'm actually in the sewer, so you can't, but if you were in the drain layer, you could click on the outfall and you can see the photograph of the outfalls that we take. On the other iPad, what I have here is, in addition to mapping just what is in the ground, our infrastructure, we also have conditional assessment related tables. So, when we go out and do a conditional assessment of something, something that's not permanent, some condition that changes, we would track that in a table, and then we relay the table to the asset because, you know... Because initially, you know, the condition of the manhole may be X today, and then after we rehab it, it's Y, so that changes. So, that's not something that we would put as like an asset ID in our GIS, but we would keep it in a conditional table. So, you could, that's, I believe it's on, is it on stormwater? I think I put it on outfall sampling. So, you can find out the data we're collecting when we're doing outfalls. So, we're mapping the full stormwater system, not just our outfalls. So, as we're out there doing investigations, which we'll talk about in a second, we're also mapping new drain manholes that we find, we're mapping new catch basins that we come across, and the pipe segments that connect those. Drain is one of those things that, in our history, because of the flooding issues that we've had, just historically, we've made changes to the drain system and don't have those updated plans. We've made them as needed because our residents have had lots of inland flooding, and so, but it's important for us now to know where those pipes are, where those manholes are, so that we can make sure that we're keeping up to date and that our infrastructure is operating properly. We also have to do extensive IDDE investigation in every catchment, which includes key junction manhole sampling. We'll talk about that a little bit. And it's part of the IDDE that includes screening in every outfall, so we have to go to every single outfall and try to grab a dry weather sample of this flow. And we're testing it for the different pollutants and parameters that would necessarily indicate cross contamination from the sanitary sewer. So, we'll do that in dry weather. We also have to do it in wet weather. And then, if we can't find the outfall, we're allowed to grab that sample from the upstream manhole. We have, we are doing manhole inspections, so every time we're in the catchment and going into a manhole, we're assessing that manhole for its condition. If you look at the packet I handed out of four pages, those are the data points we assess on each manhole. When we pull a, all the data, there's four pages of 11-by-17 paper, and that's every piece of data that we assess from each manhole that we open in the drain system. We also do CCTV inspections, and from those CCTV reports, we can create tables as well that assign scores to the pipes so that we can prioritize our repairs. Those with the most defects, we get the highest priority score, and that way, we can make sure that we're targeting our rehab effectively. Dye testing needs to be done in order to confirm any sort of cross connections or indirect connections from sanitary sewers to the drain, and building inspections. So, we go in, sometimes we go into a home or into a building to confirm an illicit connection. So, as you can see by the data that I gave you, the four pages, there's a lot of data management associated with this exercise. We were getting 30 points on each manhole at times, probably more on some. So, it's important for us to have a good system and so that we can, we don't lose that data. That's time and energy and investment from, by the city, by the great cares, by the tactors, we're going to make sure that we retain that data. So, it helps with future planning. And then, in addition to all of this, we also have to test every receiving water for specific pollutants that are identified by DDP, and every receiving water has different pollutants. So, for instance, right now, we're about to go into Furnace Brook. Furnace Brook isn't geared for dissolved oxygen, so I have to test for dissolved oxygen, I have to test for total phosphorus, and I need to test for BO2. Okay? So, like I said, it's different test for different fossil water. So, you saw your data examples. This is where I couldn't really put the slide up because it was, there's a lot of data. In addition to the IDDE portion, we have this other requirement on the state side, which is, we got to deal with INI. The mass CDP regulations, 312 CMR, 12.04, require us to come up with an INI plan. How are we going to reduce INI? And the plan requires us to come up with a phase evaluation of our sewer system. We need to conduct structural investigations on our pipes and figure out where our deficiencies are so that we can reduce the amount of sanitary sewer overflows we have and reduce the amount of INI system. Based upon those findings in the investigation, that's how we prioritize which pipes we're going to go to first and rehab first. The plan also has to include a budget. We have to identify sources of potential funds to do this type of work, and the plan has to be submitted to Mass CDP this December for approval. So, we have these two competing things. We have IDDE on one side, which is a federal requirement, and then we have this state requirement for INI. As part of the Sewer Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Survey associated with the INI, these are the different techniques we use to assess our sewer system. I'm not going to get into everyone specifically, but it obviously requires, again, opening manholes, putting the camera in the pipe, looking at dyes, all sort of people familiar, do a flow isolation, do some smoke testing, and lots of data management. Because every, just like every drain hole, we have drain manhole we open, we have the data points, the same data points in sewer manholes. So, for 3,000, you know, drain manholes and probably 3,000 sewer manholes, we have all those data points that we're collecting. So, what we've decided to do is, as you can see, a lot of the things that we're doing, both the sewer and the drain, are kind of similar. So, what this department, what the department started to do is integrate our sanitary sewer evaluation and our illicit discharge detection and elimination program. So, and why should we do this? So, these are all the things associated with the Clean Water Act. So, the Clean Water Act, like I said, deals with wastewater treatment, deals with collection systems, it deals with separate storm sewers, combined sewers, impaired water, we talked about specific pollutants for different water bodies. It deals with just all sorts of requirements. And to add something else on top of it just makes it more confusing. So, if we look at these together, can we, you know, make it more holistic, more comprehensive? So, these are the comparison, like you talked about, of the investigation procedures associated with each one of these. So, IDDE involves base flow monitoring, grabbing manhole samples, looking at the structural conditions of both the drain and the sewer, inspecting for illicit connections, and hydrogen repairing any illicit connections. Where the sanitary sewer evaluation survey, again, requires flow monitoring, manhole inspections, structural and on empty conditions, which starting to look almost identical, visual inspection for overflow infiltration, and hydrogen manhole repairs. So, if you start to look at what investigation procedures are used in each one of these, there's clearly pullout. And then, how we prioritize. So, we prioritize the area, the infrastructure areas we're going to look at in IDDE based upon our outfall sampling results, based upon the sewer system age and materials, based upon SSO reports, stormwater and drain crossings, as well as how close the URA to a bay and beach, in a particular outfall, the discharge to a bay and beach. And under the sanitary sewer evaluation survey, we're looking at consequence of failure analysis, again, the sewer system age, SSO reports, hydraulic limitations, and proximity to beaches. So, all this is starting to look similar. So, if you integrate these together, you're looking, you can understand more how your system flows, you can do more analytical sampling, and then your inspections and your pipe inspections can hit both requirements. And you can make more targeted repairs so that you're correcting both economic problem, INI, a structural problem, as well as an environmental problem, which is the IDDE on the other side. So, this is what we did when I started. So, this was our planning. We went through a planning procedure where we looked at some of the parameters associated with potential illicit discharge. So, we looked at history of sanitary sewer overflows, sewer and drain crossings, age of pipe, and things of those nature, things of that nature that would lead you to potentially have an illicit discharge between the sewer and the drain. And from that exercise, the area in orange became our highest potential priority for potential illicit discharge. You can see it's most of North Quincy, from our player. And so, what we did is, when we decided to start planning what I call, I don't know what the real name is, I'm calling it Phase Three, the sanitary sewer evaluation survey, we over, which are those green lines and the blue lines up on this map, we overlapped them on purpose in some of the same areas where we knew we were going to have illicit issues, illicit discharge issues. Because to confirm an illicit discharge, you have to look at the sewer pipe. So, why look at the sewer pipe first? CCTV is very, very expensive. You have to first pay to clean the pipe, and then you need to pay to camera the pipe. So, it makes more sense to just put the camera in the pipe first. So, that's what we're doing. In addition, we still have, we're looking at a rate-based system and a consequence of failure-based system, and we're also investigating pipes near the coast. A lot of environmental consequences if those were to fail, as well as a lot of potential savings there because we're getting infiltration from tidal water. All right, so here's planning and action. This is an action shot. All right, so this is a catchment out by Airport Road. When we did some dry weather sampling, you can see it's blue circled with the red. When we do dry weather sampling here, we've got some pretty high events for pollutants at that outfall. The light blue pipes are the sanitary sewer, and the dark blue pipes are the drain. So, as you can see, there's some crossings. You can see where the sewer and the drain are crossing. And actually, you can't tell from this map, but the elevation of the sewer pipe is higher than the elevation of the drain. And that's problematic because when it leaks, it goes to gravity, so it's coming down, not going up. So, when the drain's underneath the sewer, you have much bigger problem. So, we have a lot of crossings here. So, because we got the kick at the outfall in dry weather, we shouldn't have any problem in dry weather, but we did, and it was, you know, not gritty. So, we decided to highlight this area for our sanitary sewer evaluation survey. And this is what we found. So, that's the sewer pipe. Some pictures of what the sewer pipe looks like in those areas. All right, so we have some major problems with our sewer pipe here, and it's leaking into our drain system, which is why we had to hit at the outfall. So, what this dry weather sampling, eventually, we've only done dry weather sampling so far, we're moving on to wet in the spring. But what we, what we're finding with the dry weather sampling is it's giving us a new way to prioritize our sewer repairs. Okay, because sewers need to be repaired for, you know, economic reasons for to reduce the amount of INI that is sent into the area and being to be treated. They need to be done, you know, to keep your sewers from failing, but they also need to be done for environmental reasons. So, when we're using all these different variables to assess where's the best place to put our money, we're getting the best bang for our buck. So, I don't want to talk about this in a negative light. The C Street project was planned in 2013, 2014, before we were doing dry weather sampling. It was a very successful INI removal project. But I just want to sort of show you what would happen when you don't factor in that IDDP part of variable when you're talking about INI. So, we spent, and this council voted to borrow that with the support of the mayor, the money from the MDRA for this INI rehab project. This is a 20-inch pipe along C Street, and I think we talked about C Street with the seawall earlier. So, this is a piece of critical infrastructure that serves as a neck. It's very tightly influenced, it's underwater, half the, I guess, probably half the day. So, we cleaned it and we lined it, and all those purple manholes, we rehabbed those manholes as well. So, we removed, we effectively removed INI from this, from this project, from this pipe. And that pipelining was done in... And that pipelining was done in, I'm going to say it was done in maybe August. We hadn't done the laterals yet, but the main pipe was done in August, so we had to do the laterals. So in that same summer, we decided, we went through the exercise of delineating our catchments. So what that means is, we looked at the elevation of the ground, as well as the elevation of the land, as well as the direction, the flow direction of our drain pipes, to figure out which land area is discharged to which outfalls. And this is our catchment delineation for this area. So as you can see, the catchments are very, very small. Some of them only have that small 20-inch pipe segment and a few other branch lines that come on. But that is the catchment delineation for C Street, and those are all the, all the drains with different outfalls. And then we did our dry weather sampling in the fall. So this was after we, after we lined C Street. And once again, what we're testing for, parameters for sanitary sewage, we're testing for surfactants, which is soap. So if someone's, you know, dishwasher, or clothe, or washing machine is discharging, or the sewage is leaking into the drain, we'll get surfactants there. We're testing for ammonia, which is, you know, human waste, as well as chlorine, which is the evidence of drinking water, right, in the system. So that's what we're doing, we're testing the outfalls for. And as you can see, we got pollutant hits at those catchments. That's after we lined the pipe. So we chose to line this pipe, we lined it because it was economically beneficial. The amount of IONI you remove had a direct cost-benefit analysis to save money in the long run rather than treat the IONI. The smaller lateral pipes off that pipe maybe didn't have that same cost-benefit analysis. You have a smaller pipe, you know, less IONI, the cost to line it, you know, maybe the cost-benefit analysis wasn't there. But unfortunately, because we weren't factoring in this third variable of, you know, environmental harm, you know, now we need to go back and look at those pipes. You know, and, and, and why is that important? Well, these people were put out an entire summer with a bypass. They have coastal property, and they had to deal with a bypass all summer. You know, it's hard to go back to them and say, I know we, I know we did it, I know we're here, but we need to check this now too. So by doing this integrated planning now, we're hoping to avoid this. And I think so far, we're moving on. So upcoming sewer rehab projects. We recently did, over the middle, actually, we're doing manhole rehab for 19 manholes along Furnace Brook Parkway. Again, they're, it's in the easement, off-ramps for Parkway, so it's not actually on the street, it's in the easement. So those are very tightly influenced, so it helps with IONI. We did two pipe excavation repairs along Furnace Brook Parkway. And these funds, it's important to know, these funds were paid entirely, well, almost entirely, through mitigation funds from the development that John Flatley put in. So this was a condition to their development. They had to move a certain amount of IONI, and they funded this project. We, upcoming, we're going to have the replacement of nine service connections on John Street. The pipe actually isn't in too bad shape, but it's settled, and now the service connections are causing some infiltration there. And we're going to do two-point repairs and ZIPP lining along C Street. Other additional sewer rehab projects, these pipes here are going to be, highlighted here are going to be lined and a couple of point repairs, manhole lining. This is part of our Walston Beach project, which has been ongoing for many years. So this is going to be done, the point repairs and the manholes are being done now in the spring, and the lining work will be done in the fall. And alongside that work, we're going to be doing additional IDDE. So we're going to be looking, we're going to be doing manhole sample graphs in this area. This area, if you see, this green area, this is catchment 00871. That's one catchment. All that area drains to one outfall. And if you, I don't know if you can tell, but it goes all the way up on the top of Forbes Hill, and it comes down, goes under the train station and into St. Javro. So that's a huge area for potential pollutants, you get into the drain system. So we're going to be doing some grab samples in the drain manholes. And then this is the corresponding sanitary sewer evaluation survey we're going to be doing in the area. And that's going to include smoke testing, and dye testing, and CCTV work, so. And the other big thing that we're doing, like I said, is trying to get the word out of why utility infrastructure investment is important. You know, our residents are the ones that are putting this bill, and I think it's really important for us to reach out to them and tell them what we're doing and why we're doing it. And sort of make it, in a sense, a commodity, that they can feel like they're getting something valuable for what they're paying. So what we highlight, we've done multiple community meetings, we do them before every project. We talk about why investment is essential for the economy, fixing things before they break, it's less disruptive, that, you know, by planning in advance, we can, we can save a lot of aggravation and a lot of costs. We also talk about how this is, this investment increases our quality of life. We focus on, you know, the coastal tourism issues, we focus on the amount of money generated from recreation from our beaches, as well as money generated through commercial fishing. So by investing in our upgrades to our sewer system and our drain system, we're essentially making our waters cleaner, which is really helping our quality of life. And then it's critical to our public health. Obviously, there's, you know, there's pathogens and waterborne illnesses when we have that cross contamination. It's a public safety issue, because if infrastructure fails, it can have street collapses. And also, we're dealing with the more intense rainfalls, and we don't want to, by making sure that we're clearing our drains and allowing precipitation that falls to drain quickly and efficiently, we reduce the threat to public safety and public health for our residents. When we talk to the public, we talk about how there are short-term benefits, medium-term benefits, and long-term benefits to this. The short-term benefits are, you know, by reducing the amount of IONI, we can stabilize rates. Also, the medium-term benefits would be, you know, by fixing things early, rehabbing things before they break, we could actually end up saving money rather than waiting for it to fail. And then the long-term benefits, which is healthy waters for us and healthy waters for our kids, and hopefully, a better economy, better local economy because of those healthy waters. So the way we do this, the way we get this message out to people is through some targeted mailings, door hangers, quarterly newsletters. I'm sure you guys have seen our twice-a-year roll letter that comes out. And we all focus on what, what people are getting for their dollar. Here's some examples of some of our outreach. One on the left is an invitation that we send before a public meeting. That's me to the manhole. And then the other one is a slide that we do, that we're just going to cover one of our presentations. Here's some of our door hangers that we use for a project. We'll go around and hang a little bit of doors. We have a calendar, we have the Clean Water Buffer sticker, which is a high commodity if anybody wants one. And, you know, we're just trying to get the message out there. I don't know if you guys have seen our branding too. You see the truck, the decal on the truck? All of our water sewer drain trucks now have that decal to denote them as clean water vehicles. I have newsletter as well. So in summary, so the city sewer and drain infrastructure is aging, and it's vulnerable to coastal infiltration. But our, our work in stormwater wastewater integrated planning are a natural fit, and I think is a benefit economically to the town, to the city here. And integrated programs, planning and outreach especially, will drive efficiencies and increase the public support for our programs.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Deidre. Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Halt, for her presentation. But one of the things I, I love this kind of stuff, quite honestly, certain, certain aspects, particularly in terms of the, kind of the integrated concept that you're talking about. But take the example of your mentioning, and again, to put this in a context, you know, a lot of the folks that are listening, perhaps, they're not going to be too impressed with the Clean Water Natties campaign, quite honestly. That's not a thing that might be as important to them. I mean, there's people, obviously, passionately, they're mostly fine, they're getting it wrong. But in terms of what you're actually done, is that what we're really talking about at the end of the day are savings, correct?
Correct.
And essentially, if you were to compare out, or to compare in some way, or to do the analysis related, you give an example around the C Street component.
Correct.
That, go back now, if you were to compare the cost of what that costs, and now we're having to go back this second time to the costs associated with that, that's probably a significant difference, correct?
Correct. Because we have to mobilize again, we have to, I don't know, I don't know whether you need that. We had a bypass set up at the time. I'm not sure whether, I think the fact is, we may not need it, we could do a low-flow, but potentially a bypass, you have to do that again. You probably need to clean, then you got to go back and clean those sewers, so you get, we already have the company out there cleaning the main sewer. So it's really the cost associated with remobilization, demobilization, and also, you know, the, I think a lot, a lot of it is the effect on the residents. You know, like I said, that we already took away six weeks of the third summer with a sewer project there, and a bypass. So on the C Street project, it would definitely be that, especially, and I think the C Street project is even more, I think, I think is even more, because when you look at the amount of pipe that we didn't look at, it's very small. Like, there's probably only, I don't know, 100, 200 feet in some of those catchments that could be the problem. And we could have thought, well, if we had, if we had done that sampling before, man, we would have done that while we were out there. We would have, we would have investigated, we would have found it, and then would have lined it, and we're already out there. So there is this additional cost associated with us having to go back out there on C Street. But like I said, hopefully, that's, that won't be another.
But also now, what, in the context of this, in terms of, you played out essentially what the immediate plan is, but is there any attempt to look at it from a larger picture and perspective, in terms of what the total cost could be if we went out over time in relation to what needs to be achieved here?
Yeah, I briefly, it's really, come on, I did some math, and I managed to find it as what I, one second. On what it might cost. We have, what was it, 200, hold on, I'm sorry.
Oh, where you gave the square footage, you mean, or the, yeah.
Yeah, I tried to figure it out, but it would have been between like 200 million and $350 million to line every pipe.
So what, what's critical at this point, obviously, because we're not going to be able to come up with that, is to make certain choices and prioritize.
Correct.
Those things that have the greatest impact and the greatest effect.
That's correct. And that's what we're trying to do, because we could look at any pipe in this city and we knew it. Every pipe, unless it was just, really, it depends the age of the pipe. Every pipe has a crack, every pipe has a fracture, you know, which is a very small novel effect. But what we need to do is figure out how we're going to prioritize the repairs we're going to do today. Where are we getting the best bang for our buck? Where, where do we want to invest today so we get the biggest buyback for, for our kids, for our futures? And that's what we're trying to do, by, by looking at.
Given, it just seems to me, given the age of so much of it, that I was wondering, is there any attempt of necessarily, your focus may not be on the oldest necessarily as much as where you're going to get the largest amount of money and resources available. Over time, we think that that would be possible, particularly in a budget process of laying that out in terms of what your need is, or.
Yeah, the, the hard part is, is that we don't know what our need is until we investigate. So, let's see, so we have to first pay to investigate before we know how much it's going to cost to repair it. So it's hard for me to put a dollar value on how much it's going to, when I come in front of, you know, when we come to you and we're talking about certain projects, I can put a dollar value on how much it's going to cost to investigate a particular area. But I'm not going to know how much it's going to cost to fix that area, because I don't know what the defects are to get seen yet. We don't need to see them.
Well, you're clearly building a rationale for the importance of investigation, right? So I mean, that, that's fantastic. But over time, you're building up a body of knowledge and data that should be able to also move forward in terms of assessing what costs might be moving forward.
Correct, yeah. And our focus right now, you know, we're still taking a coastal focus. Again, it has our biggest bang for the buck for IONI, and also, you know, there's, there's a pretty good chance that because we have those defects so close to the water, that we may have exfiltration from those pipes as well. So we're having, we still need both those goals at the same time. So right now, we're taking more, still taking more of a coastal focus. But what's funny about Quincy is that catchment I showed you Walston Beach, it goes all the way up to Forbes Hill, that's coastal. All the way up on Forbes Hill is coastal, because it discharges to the coast. So we have to start thinking about, you know, we have to, what's coastal, what does coastal influence, you know, what's under the ground, not necessarily what's on the street, so, yeah.
Well, thank you. I don't know if my colleagues have questioned, but I appreciate your presentation this evening. I certainly look forward to hearing from the water side in some future reporting. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilwoman.
Asta, thank you, Governor Asta Kaczynski, Stormwater Management Theory. Well, it's one of my favorite topics, Deidre, and it's been really great having you with me, W. One moment, really, seeing a lot of the work, and I'm very appreciative to you and to the Commissioner. You know, it was, I appreciate that section circle, outfall picture that you saw. And, you know, I know you're familiar with the coastline, and seeing a lot of outfalls in those conditions, and at the top of my mind, and it briefly brought to my attention the main one right next to Quincy up, between there, American Center is one of the worst four. So, you know, us having a strategy at being able to repair those, as we see the improvements that have been completed on Edgeride Drive with the seawall, the outfalls there, you know, we had some significant storm events, and Edgeride Drive has been dry as foam because we have put the right infrastructure in place. So I look forward to working with your partners to do that in other areas on the coastline. I think, one of the, Association of Energy and Environment Committee, we stopped 50 terms, and so the MS4 has been like the topic for the last couple of years. I just want to say, you know, the other thing I was noting with a lot of these improvements is the beach closers, we've had significant reductions in our beach closers because of this being measured. And it's really interesting that, as you showed the graphics, it kind of makes me think of, I don't know, finding even all drains into the ocean, right? That people don't think about, when you're up in the inland areas of the community, and you see the catch basins, people think of those as the sewer, or they don't know, they're unconscious of it, and that all of that is draining to our waterways. And I think that you've done a tremendous job as well with the public outreach, with the newsletters, and helping to explain. You know, I think if it's something you think would be so common sense, it really isn't. It really needs that outreach and explanation and education. I know you've marked the catch basins in a lot of the areas too, and I think you're actually going to be specifically targeting them, you know, drains to Walston Beach versus drains to the waterways, to really help connect that for people. So I appreciate that effort. You had mentioned the C Street project coming online this year, and just wanted to know, if you could get me kind of a blurb for my Bulletin Art Villa newsletter, and what your timeline would be for that project.
Sure. So I'm hoping, because the catchments are small, we may be able to do the IDDE in-house, because it's just not a lot of manholes to do. And it'll be our first jump at that, it'll be our first jump at that in-house. But I have faith, we recently, because of the recent budget, we have a drain foreman funded, and that position is now filled, and I'm excited to move forward to try to do a little of this in-house now. I think those are good catchments to start in. So those can start whenever we have dry weather, in order to do that, and the CCTV work in that area will be in the spring.
Right. And we've had a lot of the TV work done in more of one, I mean, I think for us, we're the highest-risk area, the lowest-lining areas, it's been the best return on the investment. I know we did a couple of years ago, lining of the chimney hats cutting through, the, the help with the Camden Street line, and here you have these manholes filling up with tide waters, you know, two cycles a day. And so we had significant reduction, you know, just in IONI work with that project. So, you know, I think this is a great investment that the municipality needs to make, the age of our infrastructure, we're an old city, we talk about the turn of the century, and that's where most of our infrastructure was built, and it was built in, you know, particularly a lot of our water was culled at that time. That's now a fully drilled, you know, residential areas, and as our city drills, we need to have the infrastructure to support the services that people take for, that people are, you know, are expected of, obviously, with clean water and sewer services. So thank you very much, and I look forward to that information. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
One, one question I do have, is that particular PowerPoint, is there a way we could have access to that through your website?
I can answer.
Okay. Because again, that's, that's a very, very informative piece. I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, they mentioned in comment on your question about the overall cost, the overall view, and this is a draft report, we have had a chance to share it with anyone, but I don't think these, all that controversy. What this study has indicated is that if we maintain the same course that we're on, we're on the water side for a bit, and I know that, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll come back and talk more about water. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll come back and talk more about water. We would be repairing our water mains over a 60-year period. It would cost $325 million. If we up it a bit, unfortunately, that's roughly, kind of similar to the pavement management program.
Right.
If we increase our water main replacement spending, as you know, right now, we receive approximately $1 million from Mass Water, and that program is about to end in the next three or four years. Whether they renew that project or not, we don't know. We have $4 million left on that cycle. If we, so right now, we're doing about 8,000 linear feet. If we up that to about 12,000 linear feet, we're on a 40-year replacement program. That will cost approximately $3 million a year, and it will cost us $226, you know. So from $325 to $226, 60 years to 40 years, $100 million savings. The 20-year replacement, so we're doubling the amount of linear feet to 23,980, or roughly 24,000 linear feet, you would have to budget $6 million a year on water main replacement, and that will cost the rate there is $161 million. So 161 to the absolute baseline over 20 years, and then 226 is, that's probably the goal that we, we're looking to continue to explore, come up with various ways to accommodate that. And I thought about some private adjustments, things like that, Mr. Chairman. But the course we're on, that 60-year replacement over water mains, and I don't know if part of this, to bring that pipe home.
Alright.
This is, this is spirulation. Spirulation found in an online water main pipe, this is forage dynamic. This builds up over time. What it does is it restricts flow and pressure, which could affect compression, homes, fire, floor pressure, etc. And this is built up, the pipes need to be replaced. This particular pipe was from Walden's Road, and the age of the pipe was 1914.
So that's what, what's the question you said from?
I thought I could.
Yeah. Sounds like you can't do it.
But that's a graphic as, as to how important the infrastructure is. And we have roughly anywhere from $169 to $320 million worth of that kind of work, replacing that kind of stuff. So we'll get into that more, we'll, we'll get into that a bit more, Mr. Chairman, when you assess it in the back of the time clock for, but.
But again, what you're saying, just, just, the further we take this down the road, the more costly it becomes that they assess them. And so if we're talking about capital planning, this, I mean, we, we need to be thinking about this infrastructure.
Well, especially if Mass Water does not renew that program, then we don't have commercials. So we need to develop. Now, for the first time, I mean, since I've been here, and I don't know if I recall, Bodima, who I was like, but, as you recall, last year, with the Google demand with your support, we incorporated a small water main project in-house, not to match what we do with Mass Water. Just last year, we did $2.7 million of water main replacement. So we, we enhanced our normal linear footage. And we wanted to supplement that with an 1139 component. The department would take on a project of replacing the water main to be supplemental to what Mass Water resources were allowing us to do. And as we speak, the project is in the process of replacing the water mains at the center. And that's one project for them. And we've increased, when you get the budgets in the next couple of months, we've increased that a bit, so we're incrementally adding more. And we're hoping to do another, an actual road in, in next year with in-house. We don't think that there will be any significant engineering costs. We picked a small speaker, that's a dead-end street, and try and do some of this linear footage with some of the older water mains in, in-house.
I look forward to hearing more about that when we, again, try to bring you back on the sewer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for not bringing a section of sewer pipe. Thank you so much. Although, Councilor, I'm going to, I know. Patty's day is over. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Alright, we will leave that back into committee for today. Thank you very much.